So I am reconvening to order the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is January 19th, 2022 at 7:06. Sorry, we're a minute late. So I would just like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thanks again, Nick. Good job you were here. Okay, so our first item this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular and closed session meetings of December 15th, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second. Okay, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. The minutes are approved. So next is the payment of bills. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $449,861.44?
So moved.
Our second, are there any questions regarding the bills? No, all good. Okay, in that case, could the Secretary-Priece call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Boojdi.
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta?
Yes.
Ms. Downing?
Yes.
Ms. Lenoy?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis?
Yes.
The bills are paid. Next item on our agenda is PTA report. Is there a member of PTA to give a report? Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Prior to winter break, we had room parents who organized games and activities for the winter party through kindergarten through fourth grade, and that went really well, and we are planning the Valentine Day parties, which are coming up next month. January 12th, we had the general PTA meeting via Zoom, and the next one will be on March 9th at 6:30 PM via Zoom. Some of the spirit were, which we had distributed before the break, we had some which got delayed, and we will be receiving them soon. I will be distributing them as well. January 27th, we have the next PTA benefit night at the NGOs from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And we are still working for the alternative activity for, since we don't have the PTA winter dance and bingo this year. So we are still working on that, and we'll get back to you guys soon as possible. So that's it from the PTO.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
School activity report. Does anybody from the board or administration have good news to share?
I just want to say thank you for, for the administration for, it's been a rough month, I know, and I just want to say thank you to the students who've been in class. Great.
Yeah, I wanted to add that too, that, that obviously there was many, many schools that didn't start in person. I'm very proud that we were able to start in person and that our teachers worked so hard to, to keep the kids safe and that we're able to be in person, but most of us, most of the time. Obviously, there, there were a lot of Omicron cases, but the majority of kids were in class, which is great.
Well, thank you, and you know, the teachers, you know, they took it serious. They knew we were returning to in-person. And I was very grateful that, you know, they thought about their plans and who they were exposed to and came back to us healthy, which really paved the way. We did have numerous absences, and I have to just thank Mike and Colleen because it's a scramble every single day because of the substitute shortage we're all experiencing. You know, we're all helping cover classes. You could probably find any one of us in any part of the building at any moment, which is a joy, but it is also very hard to manage because we're not realizing until the morning of oftentimes that we don't have a substitute. And so Mike and Colleen are on the forefront of trying to figure out that jigsaw puzzle of who's going to be where. But, you know, I just am grateful to you guys. I'm hoping that it doesn't continue much longer because it makes, you know, coming to work in the morning and waking up and opening your email like really stressful. But they've done a great job of, you know, keeping it safe, keeping the classes covered, along with our teaching staff who are taking extra classes on in some instances during their free period or their lunchtime, and it gets very tiring. It's exhausting because everybody's doing that sort of double duty. But we feel that it's just so very important to have students here in person and doing their learning in person. You know, that that makes it all worthwhile. So thank you for acknowledging that. It has been very difficult couple of weeks. But we're feeling more positive about the absences. Our attendance rate has improved greatly. The first week back, we had about 20% of our students out, but now we're down closer to what's normal, which is about 5% to 8% on average. So we feel like things are moving in the right direction. So thank you to Mike and Colleen for all of your hard work as well. I know that our staff have some good news. I think I'll ask Jordan, would you like to, to step up first since you're the furthest into the aisle?
Okay, can you guys hear me? Okay. So just a few things that are coming down the pipeline from my office. Good news. We have been preparing for next week's Fairview Family Engagement Meeting. And we have a special guest that's going to come, one of the nurses from the Skokie Health Department. Next week's topic will surround about COVID, and we'll talk about some awareness and just kind of take some time to give parents some information and put their mind at ease a little bit about COVID and how things are going, especially around our building and the school. And then for myself, I will also be taking time to visit each of the primary classrooms next week just to give an opportunity for students to have some conversation with me, to hear what's on their minds and to let them know that I'm here to support them and how I can be of benefit to them as well. So I'm looking forward to that. The primary kiddos are always fun to kind of have some time to interact with. And then just one other thing, at the beginning of this month, when we came back from break, I did have the pleasure to collaborate with our SEL team for our RAD initiative. And I helped them put the board up this month, and this month's theme and topic was Zones of Control. So if you are interested, you can find that board, of course, in our, the T hallway. I've got a lot of good feedback about it. I was really excited. It gave me an opportunity to kind of tap into my creative side in a meaningful way and, you know, to give some students some, you know, information that's necessary. So that's all for me. Thank you all.
That's great. Thanks for your report.
Good evening. I just have two quick highlights as we look ahead to the spring. So we're already planning ahead for kindergarten registration, which is going to be happening February 8th. I know it's hard to believe, but it's always a really exciting time for us as we think about welcoming our newest and youngest Falcons to the building. It's really exciting for a lot of our families that their youngest is coming to Fairview, and they've had all their older ones come through. So I was collaborating with our kindergarten team today about some of the details for February and March. So we're excited about that. And then also exciting, we're planning our second and third grade concerts that are coming up in March. So more details to come on that, but it, a lot of these exciting opportunities give us some renewed sense of energy. Like we're getting back into the groove of what it's like to be here in the spring. So.
Thanks.
Hello, everyone. A few things in middle school. It shows just some signs of normalcy. We're planning for our eighth graders and their transition to Niles West, which has been exciting. A little bit challenging because they're trying to juggle doing things in person versus remote. And unfortunately, things have had to revert back to being remote or over Zoom when it comes to council appointments and their curriculum activities night. But, you know, we keep adding those to the calendar, hoping they could be in person, certain events, and they'll do everything they can to make sure that that transition goes as smoothly, as smoothly as they can for families, especially for families that haven't had an opportunity to be at Niles West yet. So that's exciting. Similar to what Colleen was saying, we're also getting ready to plan and send out communications about our second round of parent-teacher conferences, which seems like we just had the first, but the second is coming at the, the long weekend that we have in February 17th. And then students are out of the building on that Friday and Monday. So that's something that we're planning. We are excited to be in person to attend our annual field trip to the Illinois Holocaust Museum for eighth graders as well. That's coming on the February 2nd and 3rd. We're going to have to split up into two groups so they can accommodate our large size. So that's exciting. And then the winter season for basketball and cheerleading just started. So a lot of really good things. It gets really exciting activities and being in the building, doing some, some really fun things. So that's all good news. So thank you.
Thank you both very much for those reports. Excellent news. So if there's no more good news right now, we'll move along to administrative reports. And the first on my list is superintendent's report for January.
Yes, thank you. Just to summarize some of the highlights, I won't spend too much time on this because we will spend plenty of time on it in a moment. This time around, we had what I would term a mega board policy review. Many, many, many policies, which part of the process is, you know, for myself, reviewing all of the policies and seeing how they interlock with our current policies, et cetera, to make recommendations for the boards. So we'll talk more about that in a moment. This last week, Jeff Fair and I, as well as Archon, appeared before the Village of Skokie Appearance Commission, which was a very interesting experience. But they, when it was our turn to share our vision of what our new building will look like, they were very complimentary, approved the project, moving forth from their commission, you know, and just really applauded the school for forward thinking and being prepared to accommodate our learners going forward. So that was a really good experience for us. We are continuing to work through some issues related to the shield testing. Operations partners keep changing, and so each time there's a new partner, you know, we kind of try to sort through, you know, how we work together. But currently, we're testing just under 300 students and staff each week. Those tests have gleaned identifying, you know, those students that are asymptomatic that we wouldn't have been able to identify otherwise, so that we can try to contain COVID. But that's been, you know, really working well, and we do find it's a benefit to families who are testing because it's very hard right now to get a PCR test as well as get it back in a timely manner. So this is helpful to those families who are interested in that. As I mentioned already, you know, just covering classrooms with the substitute shortage has really proven to be challenging for us. However, I feel that we've done the very best we can with this situation that's presented itself. On the financial front, Jeff and I have teamed up over several meetings in preparing for the bond issuance and, and working with Chapman and Cutter and Elizabeth Hennessy. So that whole piece of the project is moving forward. You'll have an opportunity later in the evening. We will have some resolutions that we're recommending the approval of tonight. Karen Kemp's department went through a food service audit by the state of Illinois. This happens roughly every four or five years. They're a little bit behind because of COVID and not wanting to go into schools, but they're coming back into schools. So it's a week-long audit where actually the, the food service prep, the operation of the line when students go through and all of the documents, records, financials are all audited. And I'm very happy to say that, you know, the audit was, was clean, really no recommendations except for temperature, keeping a temperature gauge in the kitchen dry storage closet area to make sure it's at the proper temperature. That's an easy thing for us to do. So, you know, anytime you have an audit going on, you know, it adds a little level of stress, but Karen and her team do a great job. So we were happy to have that opportunity to just hear about our program and know that we're doing the thing, everything that we need to correctly. And then finally, our work on the facility project is moving forward. Tomorrow, we will be drilling down on the learning center design, what the tech spaces will look like, what the STEM labs will look like. It's a very high-level conversation about just structurally where doors should be, where windows should be, what the courtyards will look like. So we're really not getting into the nitty-gritty. You know, there's no discussion of paint colors or furniture, anything of that point yet, but really just trying to nail out the, the architectural design. So that's very exciting. We're including our staff in those conversations. Those members who will be working in those spaces have been at the table throughout the process. But that's coming up this week. And finally, on the maintenance front, we received our new district pickup truck just in time for winter, which is great. As you know, supply for vehicles has been difficult. We've waited over a year for this truck to arrive. So happy to have it. And we also had a life safety inspection that happens annually where the regional office comes in to walk the building and make sure that we're in compliance with everything that we need to be. And that too came through clean with no recommendations for improvement. So, so it's been a busy couple of weeks after the winter break. But we're off to, off to a good and busy start in January. Happy to answer any questions that any board members might have, any clarifications that I can offer. Please let me know.
Noah, thanks for that report. I, I also just wanted to add that those audits you mentioned, it was a food service and also the health and safety and so on. I mean, that is, that is excellent that we just pass those things. They come in, they inspect, there's no recommendations, there's no fault found or anything. I mean, that, that is excellent record. So thanks to Karen and her team and Cassio and his team for, for keeping us all straight, which is great. Thank you. Okay, so now reading of board policies, and Cindy alluded to this in her report. I've been on the board for what, 10 years now? I've never seen this many board, board policies that have to be reviewed. This is absolutely mama. So just to sort of fill in people, especially newcomers to the board. Basically, the spring legislature in Illinois brings about changes in the law. Obviously, some of those affect schools. And the key pieces of legislation that happened in the spring that have affected the, the policies that we have were changes to Aaron's Law, which is about child sex abuse prevention. Changes to laws relating to school board employee, school board and employee ethics, training and misconduct. Laws that relate to student attendance, health and safety, changes in the Open Meetings Act, the addition of the Juneteenth holiday to the school calendar, calendar, column. Changes in student data and privacy records, in particular Supper, which is the new Student Online Personal Protection Act, and also coal tar sealant disclosures. You didn't know that, did you? But anyway. So all in all, the packet that we received from press, who were the ISP group that, that supply us with our policies, there were 56 policies that needed to be reviewed, and clearly, we were not in position to go through every single one this evening, or any evening for that matter. So what I did for the benefit of the board members who, who are basically the decision makers on this is I summarized it in a table with comments about each, what the significance of was of the change that's happening and where the decisions need to be made. Because more often than not, there is a new law that's put in place, there's new language that has to go in the policy, and that's that. There is no discussion. It just has to be put in because that's what's new. So there, in this table, I haven't included any of the policies that just have changes to legal references or footnotes because that's all they are. There really isn't anything of the policy itself that changes. And also, often times, the reason it's actually included is for a five-year review and for continuous improvement. Continuous improvement is often just language changes, references to departments change and things like that. Those are also not included. So for the purposes evening, there, there really is so many to go through. And like I say, most of the time, the change needs to be made, and that's, that's, that's all there is. But the ones that I did want to highlight this evening was first of all, the 2:110, which is actually quite relevant to the board, and that is, it is now approved that we can hold our meetings in remotely if we want to because of a health emergency. So it had always been that that was a special decision that was made by the governor, a special directive from the governor when COVID hit. But now that actually is in our policy that in the case of a health emergency, we can, we can go remote. So there's no worries about having to do that should the time, should the time come. The next one I highlighted is 4:165, which is actually a brand-new policy. This actually comes from, from the changes I mentioned to Aaron's Law about prevention of child sex abuse. There is also a language related to grooming behaviors in the policy. So this is an entirely new policy that's going to be added to our policy manual. It requires the schools to adopt and implement a policy addressing sexual abuse of children and age-appropriate curriculum for children on sex abuse. So that is definitely worth a look that you, you would want to check that over before we approve it. Other ones here, you, you can see I've added notes on the right-hand side to the effect that we already do it. It's not anything of, of any significance. We just happen to need to add it to our board policy. So I'll skip over those. The one that is really significant is 6:60, which is the board policy related to curriculum content. And I apologize, this goes over the page. It was the only way I could do it. So the things that have been added to the list of required curriculum in the, in the school district is to add opioid abuse reference to the drug and substance use prevention curriculum. There is already that curriculum, but now it's extending to opioid abuse. The 30 minutes of play for students from K to 5, I think we're all familiar with that. That's been talked about for quite a few months about the implementation of that. Anti-bias education and conflict resolution curriculum, computer literacy skills, principles of representative government, and mention of contributions to society by Americans of different faiths. There's an expansion of Black history and also the introduction of the new Asian-American history curriculum. So those are all additions. But in my column on the right-hand side there, you'll see that there's a, a reference to some questions that appear in the board packet that you received requiring a decision on our part. And what I was going to say was basically, take this away, review it over this next month, and then come back next month, and then we'll actually make the decision as to what we include. So the one that was regarding anti-bias education, there is an additional clause to put in this into the curriculum content. Alternatively, it would be included in a policy a little bit farther down the list, which is extended instructional programs. The thing about the curriculum is it would be sort of in the school day. The extended instructional programs, as you can see, the current policy has things like summer school, outdoor education tutorial program. Those are more like extracurricular study. So if we want to keep it part of our actual curriculum on anti-bias, to have anti-bias education as part of it, we would put it in curriculum content. If we want it to be more like an extracurricular, then we would put it in 6:180. That's my understanding of it. So we can make a decision about that.
And do we just, do we decide or discuss that at the next meeting?
We will, we will. That's why I did this for you, so you can review it and read it proper. And then we'll actually be approving one way or the other next month.
Okay, so it's, this is for us to review for next?
Exactly. And then the other one that needs a decision, you'll see in the, in the board packet, it actually says questions, and that, and it gives you the alternatives that we're supposed to be picking from. So the other one relates to new laws in health and sex education. So there are actually five things listed pertaining to 6:60 on curriculum. So we need to select which of those we feel is most appropriate for our school. So that's on page 132, 132 of the packet.
Marian, does it matter which section, whether it's 6.6, 6.8, that it falls under? Will it have a consequence in how implemented in the future? Or is it just a matter of where we think it fits better?
Yeah, my, my personal opinion is that if it's in curriculum, it's part of the curriculum and it's part of the school day. The things mentioned in the extended instructional programs are not part of the school day.
So it's more.
Some schools are not part of the school day.
So, so 6.8 sounds like it might be, or no, 6.20, sounds like it might be optional.
Potentially, yeah, potentially, because obviously summer school, not every kid does it.
Yeah.
Any kind of tutorial program, not every kid does it.
Yeah.
Potentially, it would fall into something like that. So yeah, that's, that's how I see it.
Yeah.
But if I'm reading it differently from anyone else's thoughts, then let me know. So, but the section, I would urge you to read those quite carefully because it talks about the situation and what position we are, and therefore the appropriate sentence that IASB would put in our policy that, that explains that position. Do you sort of mean? So it's a bit hard to explain without you actually reading it. So so that's that. The, the other point where we need to make a decision is the one, which is 7:160, which is about student appearance. This basically says the school cannot prohibit hairstyles associated with race, ethnicity, texture, et cetera, unless it disrupts the educational process or compromises health and safety. There is a question there being asked by, by press as to whether we actually want to include all protected classes, which are the classes mentioned in 7:10. You'll have to cross-reference that as to what's in 7:10. But it does extend it much further. This text says about race, ethnicity, texture, but that goes into gender, gender identity and things like that. My thought is, you know, if we had a student who identifies as a, as a girl and wants to wear their hair long, even though perhaps their first cut says they're a boy, then I don't think we should object to that. I mean, they want to wear their hair long then. So in my mind, adding that sentence would mean that they'd be covered too.
Right.
Is that what I'm saying?
Makes sense.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm too busy. Yeah. I'll try and say it straight to the mic. But yeah. I think we should just look at those protected classes mentioned in 7:10 and think about whether we want them to be included or not. And that is it. I mean, you do have them all here. Not all 56, because like I say, I, I just didn't even bother with the legal references ones or the five-year reviews or whatever. But I still think it's about, it's about 40 there altogether, I think. So there's your homework. If you would like to just review those, and then we'll come back to them next month, and we'll make decisions on those paragraphs and approve them. Okay. So that's the end of the board policies. So we're moving on to board committees and representatives. And oh my gosh, I'm first on the list. Okay, so a report from Edward. I have that for you. So first thing to report. So first thing to report from Ed Red is normally, and again, this is new for our new board members. Normally they would hold their legislative dinner at the end of January. It's always the last Monday in January. But being that, you know, we're in the middle of a boost of Omicron variant, they decided to postpone it. One of the things was that they were finding that many legislators wouldn't want to attend. So they not much point if you can't have the legislators there. And the other part is that it's actually their fiftieth year this year. So they definitely wanted to make a bit more of a bash of it. And so they're actually going to be holding it on April twenty-fifth. So a few months from now, when hopefully, how many times have we said this? Hopefully it will calm down. Okay, the spring session itself was initially delayed and obviously has been quite limited because of the COVID situation. All bills must be filed by the end of January. So it is expected that there will be a flurry of bills being filed in the next week or so. The initiatives that Edward are working on right now is first of all firearms restraining order act. This would allow schools to be able to petition for a firearms restraint on someone if they thought it was necessary. In the realm of special education, they're proposing a loosening of the rules on ISB's, ISB's payment for residential facilities for students. Currently, ISB has a list of approved providers, but there's a distinct shortage. There's not enough providers. So it would extend the payment to non-approved facilities. With T I F and P T A, they're working on the definition of blighted, which is usually the eligibility definition for, for having a TIF at tax. Tax incremental financing may simply means that the district wouldn't collect taxes from a particular company for a long time. Mandating, they're looking at that too. And in the realm of profit, property taxes, which is actually quite pertinent to us is there would be more transparency on property tax objections. We've heard Jeff talk about this at times that suddenly a tax objection gets approved and our income from that particular company or organization or whatever would go down. This is proposing that the school district would be informed all the way through the objections so that we could at least anticipate the potential loss of funds. They're now sending weekly updates. It's obviously getting a lot busier now legislatively. The latest I've heard from them is that relates to that special education rules on residential facilities for students. They have actually loosened that now and they will, ISB will pay for non-approved facilities under certain conditions. And also there's a new plan to increase the number of days that a retired teacher can sub for a score from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty-five days in a year. Clearly in response to the terrible shortage that we're having with, with subs at the moment. So that's where we are. Things are really hot on up with Edward. There's a lot more going on. So I'll probably have, you know, more extensive reports like that going forward for the next month or so. Okay, next on my list is N T D S E. Nora, do you have a report for us?
Yeah, last week N T D S E governing board met and basically I can't like speak and see at the same time. You know, they are our special ed consortium of services and they're actually planning for E S Y already. So they're talking to Carly Gross here about which students may need summer, summer school or extended school year. So they're getting that plan already and they're scheduled ready for that. They have had a vaccine clinic with fifty-one of their community members and family registered. And then they held a second one and seventy-one people were registered. So they are knocking it out of the park with their vaccination clinics, which is great. They too experienced kind of a, a big absentee the first week back. They have a very, very medically sensitive population. So teachers and paraprofessionals and clinicians are incredibly cautious around kids who have trach a lot of non-verbal kids who can't pull on masks. So it's just, it's an incredibly sensitive community and they have remained open from day one and are doing everything they can to mitigate it. So their attendance is doing, they're kind of holding steady. N T D S E staff can come here or go to any of their satellite schools for testing. So N T D S E itself does not have like shield testing programs just because of the transient, they don't want people in and out. And so the staff there can go to any of the membrane districts on their testing days and get weekly tested, which is great. And right about the next week or so, they're going to be talking with Fairview about numbers for next year, which programs some of our students may or may not need or who qualifies, what services we think we may or may not need. And in the end of January, they'll already start planning for next school year and our relationship and connection with them. So construction is going really well. The gym is kind of foundationally laid out and they're starting to build up. So you can really see how awesome that, that facility is going to be. And they're just expanding. I mean, Taryn said that the enrollment at N T D S E is the highest she's ever seen in fifteen years. So I think once we expand, you know, we can house at least or hopefully satellite a classroom here. That's N T D S E.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next on my list is Diana.
Kajal gave a nice presentation, but I did want to add that I thought it was very amazing of the PTA group to really think outside of the box for the winter dance. And they're trying to come up with a way for the kids and the families in the community to give back to those in need. So a lot of ideas and thoughts. I thought that was awesome and a good role model for our kids to be a part of that in the community. I just wanted to say that.
Great.
Yeah.
I, I think what PTA has done in this COVID situation is remarkable. Quite honestly, you know, they've, they've still, they've still carried on doing stuff. They, they've still connected with the community considerably. So well done. Okay, so next item is freedom of information requests. I can confirm that there were three freedom of information requests in this last month and they were responded to as required. Information items and correspondence. Mr. Secretary, do we have some correspondence?
Yes, the board received the following correspondence following our last board meeting on December fifteenth. And it was a note of thanks was received from Sandra Recidi, special education teacher for the flowers in memory of her grandmother.
Thank you. So next item is public comment. At this time, our members of the public are invited to address the board on issues pertaining to the actions of the board and on matters that there are in the purview of the board. Members of the public are reminded of board policy two colon thirteen, public participation at board of education meetings. And the summary of that policy is that the board will allow a minimum of thirty minutes for comment if needed. And there will be a twenty-minute minimum on any one subject if needed. Comments are heard in the order that the members come to the microphone. Members of the public are required to identify themselves and may speak for a maximum of three minutes. The board secretary will keep time. When the speaker has thirty seconds of their time remaining, the board secretary will inform the speaker that they have thirty seconds to close their comment. Speakers that have addressed the board in the last, in, on the same subject in the past two months can be denied the opportunity to speak. And both speakers and other audience members are reminded that they're required to conduct themselves with civility and respect in line with board policy, oh, colon thirty, which pertains to the conduct of persons while on school property. So with that, are there any members of the public that wish to address the board?
Good evening. Dr. Whitaker, members of the board, my name is Jason Welling. I have three children at Fairview. I would like to express my heartfelt gratitude to the staff, the teachers, to you yourselves as well for all the work that has gone into dealing with this school faces a pandemic in a constantly changing, chaotic environment. It is very difficult to express, for those who have worked at home especially, how much challenge the teachers and staff have faced. And I truly appreciate that. In my experience, this district continues to set an example for others in this regard. And I truly believe that this example comes from the application of the school's values with an understanding of the framework that you had to work with. And it was exemplary in my mind. Now, in the framework of the equity report, we have the ability to ask ourselves if we continue in this specific area to also reflect our values and the values of the community. I think you as the board owe yourselves, if you have not done it already, a robust discussion about where the report reflects our value, where it does not. As we profess them, I think there is an extraordinary opportunity here to look at the language in the report and thank you for publicly for sending it out publicly, but to look at the language in the report and the differential in variance between how the staff, the students, the families look at these issues creates a lot of opportunity for you to understand and dig deeper into why that variance exists. And in those whys, I do believe is where we start to find some commonality. All right. So thank you for your time. Do continue to do your diligence and maintain this as a high priority despite all of the other challenges and things you have to face. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comment. Does anyone else wish to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Johnson and I am a parent of a Fairview student. I'm here to urge the board to act on the findings and recommendations of the equity audit in a timely fashion. It is clear from the audit report that the board cannot afford to delay implementing these recommendations. To anyone paying attention, the findings of the audit are no surprise, disappointing, but not surprising. For too long, there has been a failure of leadership at Fairview when it comes to equity issues. You are failing our children and with the findings of the audit, you are running out of excuses. The data enclosed in the equity report is damning. The report states cultural responsiveness is the responsibility of all workers that occupy a public sector. I am asking that the board and Dr. Whitaker prioritize drafting an equity statement for the district. Commit to the next five new hires being focused on correcting the imbalance of new staff to better reflect the demographic makeup of the students of Fairview. And that all faculty, staff and board members are required to complete C training by the end of the next school year. These tasks, if completed, are only the beginning of the work that needs to be done so that Fairview can truly live up to its mission of creating a strong foundation for academic excellence and personal growth by setting high expectations, teaching to the needs of learners and embracing the richness of our cultural diversity. I ask that you set high expectations for yourselves and take on this important work without delay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else wish to address the board?
My name is Elizabeth Palmer and I have two children at Fairview. I want to echo what Jason said about your extraordinary leadership in the pandemic. And I also want to thank you for publishing the full equity report on your website. I've read the report and one thing it says is it is urgent that an equity lens be applied in all of the district's policies, procedures, processes, interactions and resources. This is a systemic change that it's calling for and systemic changes can be really difficult. But that is what it's calling you to do. The report also says the inconsistent ratings given by various stakeholders when it comes to the district's mission, vision and strategic plan, equity goals and needs assessment are a point of concern. These inconsistencies, I've noticed those inconsistencies as well in talking to various Fairview stakeholders. And the inconsistencies reveal a lot of things, but one thing that it reveals is that your leadership could be stronger in this area. There are many beautiful things about Fairview. And what the report reveals, which is so heartbreaking, is that those beautiful things are not always equally accessible to everyone in the community. So we need to work on that with our culture, with our policies. And to overturn a harmful culture requires deliberate and decisive action on the part of the leaders. One step that you can take now is to embed into your board mission statement, your board policies and the district's statement, a clear commitment to equity. And then the really harder sustained work begins. The report is, I think, like a hundred and nine pages. That's, it has a lot of recommendations. That's a lot of work ahead of you. But I want to assure you that the majority of people in this community are behind you in this work. Most of the members of this community want this from me. We may not always be the loudest ones, but I think the majority of people know that we will support you because we want the school to live out its mission to serve all of the children. And I think most of us know that when equity work is done well, that it benefits everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Does anybody else wish to address the board?
Hi, my name is Ken Otska. I have two.
Could you speak a little bit closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
My name is, my name is Ken Otska. I have two students at Fairview. I would like to express my disappointment and concern with the results of the equity audit. I can't say that I'm surprised at some of the findings and quotes captured by the audit, having heard from other parents and Fairview community members. Time after time, when concerning occurrences have happened in our fair, in or around Fairview, the administration has made excuses or tried to minimize the events as one-offs. But it's obvious to all that are paying attention that there is a pattern of failures and how these things are handled. And now, having this report, I think it confirms some of these issues. To me, the biggest problems are the inconsistencies and lack of support from the administration and how to deal with the equity and the poor communication with the community. Now that you, the board, have the support, I expect that this is made a priority and that no more time is wasted for the sake of our students, our staff and our families. A strong statement on committing to equity should be drafted. More diverse staff needs to be hired. The current staff, including the board, needs to be trained in equity and there needs to be better communication with the community. We now know that your efforts, although well-meaning, have been inadequate. And I think it's time to bring in someone that has the expertise necessary to make sure Fairview can live up to the great school that it claims to be. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board? Okay, I think we're done with.
We did have.
Oh, that's right. Yes, you did say, I'm sorry.
If time permits, we did have one comment that was received online. Mister, we did receive one public comment via the internet.
Yep.
Mister Healy was going to read that for us.
My name is Jennifer Osuka and I'm a parent of two Fairview students. Thank you for sharing the full report from the equity audit. I want to know how the district is going to be transparent about their plans and progress while moving forward with the recommendations that were given in the audit. I ask that the community be regularly updated about all the work that is being done to achieve the recommendations that were given. I want to know if the district is going to hire an equity officer to help navigate through the many needs that were pointed out in equity audit. Finally, I ask the district to make a detailed and official mission statement about their commitment to equity.
Thank you.
That was the only one.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on from public comment, we have our action items. So first of all, we have a consent agenda. So first of all, we have a consent agenda of some items. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the following consent agenda of approve the certified staff seniority list. Approve the support staff seniority list and possible, no, actually, no, we're not approving. Close session minutes release that wasn't discussed. We'll post that, bring that till next month for it. So the consent agenda just consists of those two things, which is approve certified staff seniority list and approve support staff seniority list. Could I have a motion and a second?
So moving.
Okay, is there any explanation to go with this or?
All I would add is that annually, the seniority lists are developed and provided to the board for approval. Nick works with me to verify that the certified staff seniority list is representative of, you know, where the teachers are. And then we work with support staff as well to verify those, those details, but. You know, this comes into play if we were needing to reduce staff for some reason, so that we understand the seniority of who's been hired when. And, you know, hopefully in this coming year, we won't be needing to access that list for any reason, but we do need to have it in place.
Does anybody have any questions? Okie dokie. This is just a voice vote, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay, consent agenda of those two items is approved. The next item. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the following? Resolution providing for the issue not of not to exceed $10 million general obligation limited tax school bonds. Series 2022A. For the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax. To pay the principal and interest on said bonds and authorizing the execution of a purchase agreement with Raymond James and Associates, Inc. In connection with the proposed sale of said bonds. If I have a motion and a second, then I will turn this over to, to Mr. Fair to explain what I just said.
So move.
Our second.
So for those of you who might not have been able to hear that. This is a follow-up to last month's meeting when we heard from Elizabeth Hennessy, from Raymond James, who explained the process of selling bonds to be able to. Accrue the funds necessary to be able to pay for the facility project going forward. So this had been previously discussed at a couple of board meetings and now this is sort of the final step for board to approve the resolution.
Does anybody have any questions? Okie dokie. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosde.
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis. I vote yes. Ms. Downing. Ms. Lenoir.
Yes.
Mr. Guliana.
Yes.
And Ms. Brown.
Yes. Okay, that action item is approved. The next action item, I need a motion and a second to approve the following. Resolution authorizing and providing for the issue of not to exceed $5,250,000 general obligation debt certificates. In parentheses, limited tax. Series 2022B for the purpose of building and equipping additions to and altering, repairing, and equipping existing school buildings. And facilities and improving sites. Authorizing and providing for an installment purchase agreement for the purpose of paying. The cost of purchase agreement with Raymond James and Associates, Inc. In connection with the proposed sale of said certificates. Can I have the motion and a second first? Our motion, second. Mr. Fair, can you put that into layman's English, please?
So this item is another debt instrument, but the difference being that we won't be levying for this amount. This amount will be paid over time out of funds that we already have on hand. This will be allocated for construction, so we'll receive the money in and then over the course of time, we'll be paid out of probably our operations and maintenance fund, depending on whatever fund we have funds available. But it should be important to note that the difference between this and then the $10 million that we won't be levying for this amount separately.
Any questions?
No.
We trust you, Jeff.
Okay.
Can the secretary please call the roll vote?
Yes, Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Guliana.
Yes.
Ms. Lenoir.
Yes.
Ms. Downing.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
Ms. Boosde.
Yes.
Okay, we're good. So, items for future consideration. Does anybody have anything to share?
Yeah, can we get an update on what is happening with the Equity Audit results? I know that the, there's an Equity Committee within Fairview that's working on it. We can just get an update on what's been going on and I know we were told as a board to, to let this group do their work. So I'd love to see what has been happening.
Yeah, and as I have previously indicated, the group is meeting on Monday, January 24th, I think that is. And so an update will be provided to the board in February. We haven't had that meeting yet, so there's nothing to provide you at this time.
Is the meeting coming up on Monday, their first meeting since the release?
No, it is not.
Okay.
I'm gonna. Put an item for future consideration and kind of off of what Shereen said is I know that the staff and the Delt team is developing. A statement, but it does sound like we as a board might want to support them in that. So, I'm going to put on, if anybody is going to second this, I'm going to put on our next meeting that we discuss, we generate one among ourselves that says like we support the equity work of the various staff and teachers. As a board statement, if that is something you guys want to do.
Well, it depends whether it's a statement of the district. That we support.
Yeah, district statement.
If it's like a mission statement on equity in particular, then, then we could contribute to it, but I think it needs to be one statement, don't you think?
And, and as I said last month at this meeting, the group, that's the district Equity Leadership Team, which is comprised with all members of our school. Staff and faculty are going to draft an equity statement. But would it help you to have? Absolutely. A board like statement. You know, as we are meeting on Monday, we have about an hour together during our staff development time because this committee branches across all grade levels. So we're not all available at the same time to participate. And that is going to be the primary focus of that meeting is to draft a statement. I don't know, I can't tell you right now that that will be finalized, complete in one session. We have a second session scheduled, I believe. Again, I don't have my calendar up in front of me. I believe it's Monday, February 6th. So we will have a second session prior to the next board meeting. It would be my hope to bring a draft statement to the board for your response, review, feedback, and potentially for you to. Endorse, you know, as something that you support. So that is the plan. That was the plan in December. You know, with winter break and a tremendous number of absences and somewhat limited staff development time. This is hard work to do. I can't pull teachers out of classrooms for staff development right now. It's impossible. Some schools would do a half day in service where they pull, you know, bring in 15 sods and those people can have a three-hour chunk of time. I can't do that right now. We don't have the substitutes. We can't do it. So we are using the time that we do have. And my hope would be for your next board meeting, again, as I previously stated, that we would have a draft statement for you to review. But do you need anything from us?
Well, I think that would be our, that would be our time to contribute once there's a draft created, then we can actually have our input and, and. Wordsmith it basically. If there's anything we feel that is essential to add, we can add it. What do you think?
Yeah, will we look at that in closed session prior to?
No, it's not a closed session topic.
This wouldn't be a closed session topic. This would be a public session.
Okay, so it'll be in the. I think that'll be great. I appreciate having the opportunity to do that.
Yeah.
Especially in the setting where it can be, you know, discussed openly among.
I mean, there's no reason why we as board members can't put our thoughts together about the kind of things that we would want to see in it from our point of view. And then, you know, when we see the draft that they come up with, we can, we can tweak it. I mean, I think, you know, a statement like you were saying, Nora, about we support the staff, well, I mean, that's. I'm not sure we have to write that down. We definitely support the staff on what they're doing and. But, you know, the main reason for this committee is that, you know, it's, it's broader encompasses. All the different faculty from lots of different experiences and origins and so on, so. It's more representative of our school, I think, you know. So.
And I guess I just wanted to add that I, I think, I agree that having the statement and having a, a public discussion, I think, is important, but I also. Don't want to put words in Nora's mouth, but, but I think having a discussion of how we as a board can then continue to build on that, whether that is modifying our board policies to include a statement. Or something, I, I think that's a discussion that after we see the finalized statement, I, I would support having that continued discussion about how. We as a board can continue to build off of the work of that committee.
Yeah, I think just like adding it to our agenda, you know, as one of the line items.
Yeah.
I will say like this chart is amazing. But having our equity, this chart, oh, having our equity. Report. Helps you look at this. I'll look at all these policies.
Yeah.
And what we're doing and what our teachers are feeling, what our community is feeling and looking at this and making those things match. So I guess I just want.
Yeah, this, this is law.
Right, I understand. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it all has to integrate.
Right. That these aren't separate pieces and that our role is to support. And oversee. That the district is doing what we need it to do. So I know that, that Delt team is meeting and developing this statement and I just want to make sure that they know. They have our utmost support and that teachers know that they have our utmost support in taking risks and, and. Looking at this in a hard way and that it's not going to happen in two weeks or three weeks.
No.
Right? We've been on this journey for a long time, not a long time, but since I've been. So, anything that we can do to help like. Keep that in focus or highlight that, I think, is helpful. COVID has forced schools in such a. Immediate pivoting, constant response, but I don't feel like we have lost focus at all and I feel like we are keep going back to. The audit to take a look at it. And I think the staff. Deserves a lot of kudos for keeping two very high priority things foremost in their mind while taking care of them. So I just want to make sure they know that if, if a board statement is needed on top of a district, I mean, we are the district, so I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that. If we need to add to what they develop or take it any further, let us know.
And then also getting a follow-up on the, some of the recommendations that came out from the audit. What's the process look like for reviewing those, those recommendations? What's the, is there a timeline? Is there a, should we implement these recommendations or not? Is there a thought process behind that? I'd like to hear a little bit more about that as well.
Yeah, and again, I, I previously stated this. One of the first recommendations made in the audit was to develop an equity statement. That there was a priority number one, so that all of the work after that would fall underneath that statement and we would be unified under, behind the statement. So we need to create the statement and then we can proceed with the other recommendations. You know, our intention is to try to hammer out the statement as quickly as possible. And I appreciate, Nora, you acknowledging the fact that there is a lot of moving parts right now. For our teaching staff and our support staff members and administrators, but I don't believe we've lost focus. There are a variety of other things going on. You know, there's a $22 million building project that we're trying to shepherd forward. There are student issues that are of paramount importance to us that we are trying to manage. Including some significant emotional issues with students and families. And so, you know, we're moving forward on curriculum, social studies specifically. And we'll be bringing a recommendation to the board for an approval of a new curriculum because we don't want to be behind there. So there are a wide variety of things that are happening and I don't think that we have lost focus at all. I believe that we are doing as, as best a job as we can to juggle. A variety of different things, but I really believe, you know, Dr. Dubio. Top recommendation was to. Develop an equity statement that we can all support and agree and align with. And from there, the rest of the work will continue. We've engaged with her to continue working with our staff. You know, because we do need help. And we've already engaged her, we've already secured dates. I've reported all of that to the board. So this is a process and it will be, you know, we've heard loud and clear that people want it to go faster. You know, we're, we're trying to make it move as fast as we can, but we are limited. If we want to engage many stakeholders in the process, we are limited to engaging people when they're able to be a part of the process. For Fairview, that's Mondays and institute days right now. You know, on the calendar, so.
No, I hear that and I appreciate your prioritization of this, the recommendations by Dr. Dubio and in no way. Am I suggesting you should de-prioritize student health or mental health or curriculum or all the numerous things you have going on in the district. My request is just to get an update. To see where we are and what the process is to tackle the recommendations. I can't assume that building or incorporating a statement. Will answer all the, is the answer to all the recommendations there, right? And so if there's, if there's a committee that's focused on managing those recommendations, I'm sure they have a. Process they have in mind of how they want to tackle the recommendations, which ones are they going to look at next? So that's just all I'm looking for. I'm not asking for them to have it done by a certain date or. In any way, asking them to do more than they already have planned, just understanding what's the process, just so that we can have an expectation for ourselves to say, okay, within six months or eight months, whatever the case is. Just to know what to expect. That's all. But thank you.
Yeah. It's a lot.
Okay, and connected with that, Nora emailed me during the week.
Oh, yeah, I was going to bring that up too.
About IASB run all kinds of webinars online from time to time, but they're actually running a whole series on equity, diversity, and inclusion. There are one, two, three, four of them over the next coming months and I. Did do a quick print for you so that you can just have that for reference. You just need to go online to register with your ISB account and. I want to pass it over. I, I've signed up for these. Myself, the first one's on January 25th, that's next week. So, I'd recommend them. I've done several IASB trainings. Around this kind of issues and things like that and they're excellent. They really are excellent and you're hearing from other board members. They're, they're people that are talking about their own experiences. In their schools and it's really enlightening. It's really important to, so I'd recommend you sign up for those, so.
So, you know, fellow members, when we get those emails from Dean. Somebody from IASB.
Yeah, they're all in there.
That they're in there. So when you open those, like, it's all free to us. It's usually in the evening and at the moment, everything is remote. So some of it is just really a great, many of us are doing this in our own profession, but it's a nice thing to look at through this lens of. Being in sort of an oversight committee. So they, Mary Ann like kind of took the links and printed them out for us so you can check it out. If something looks interesting, look at that email from Dean so-and-so.
Oh, I forgot his name now.
Sorry, Dean, and.
Dean Langdon.
There you go.
It always comes from Dean Langdon.
And I'm currently participating the second time in the seed program, so if anybody has information or questions about.
So if anybody has information or questions about what it is, I'm happy to answer that, too. It's like a Skokie.
Oh, you're doing that?
Is it Skokie specific? No.
No, I haven't done the C, but I have been doing them through, because I work for Maine Township High School. They've been running all kinds of equity programs, and I just finished one today with Cory Wallace. Do you remember Cory Wallace? Does everybody remember? Oh, maybe don't. She used to run the EL Center in District 68. She started it, actually, didn't she? She's worked in that field for many, many years now. And she was doing, it was a three-day, not three consecutive days, but over the last couple of months, three days on implicit bias. So I just finished that today. So she's excellent. She really is excellent. And I think just, all of this is just a journey. You just have to keep absorbing everything you can and experiencing as much as you can to improve your own perspective. So anyway. Anything else for future consideration? Nope. So in that case, can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at 8:17? So move. Our second. Could the secretary please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Boosdi.
Yes.
Ms. Lenoy.
Yes.
Mr. Gulliana.
Yes.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
I vote yes. And Ms. Downing.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your participation this evening.